You can call it to order.
I think we're ready to call this Planning Commission meeting to order. Going down the next item on our list, our agenda here is, uh, public comments. See, we have quite a few people from the public here tonight. Is there anybody that would like to speak before we get rolling on the rest of this?
And if you're here for an agenda item, you can speak at that time.
If not, Mr. Chair, I was going to, uh, utilize this time to introduce two of our new Planning Commission members, uh, Phil Nichols and Zach Robbins. Uh, they were both, uh, appointed by the city council at the last city council meeting, uh, in, or first, you know, or first meeting in December, uh, in that, so they're two of our new, uh, commission members, uh, which was good because we were down to two, uh, which wouldn't have not been able to hold a meeting. So now we're at a point where we're back up and running. So anyway, I just wanted to say welcome, uh, to both of you, uh, and appreciate you, uh, volunteering and, and being part of, uh, the commission and help to move the city forward.
Okay, I think next, uh, we have the approval of minutes from our previous meeting, October tenth.
I vote to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion by Brent and a second by Phil. Phil Nichols?
Yes.
Zach Robbins?
Yes.
Brent Linford?
Yes.
And Lloyd Lance?
Yes.
All right, passes four oh, thank you.
Okay, we have, uh, Planning Commission application number twenty-four dash zero zero eight. Discussion and possible action on request for a special use permit for a one hundred and fifty-foot telecommunications tower in the A-one general agriculture zoning district on a property located at one-one-one-two North Wentz Street. Can we get a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as indicated, this is a special use permit for a telecommunications tower. Uh, that address is for the Missy's location, uh, which most people would, should know, uh, there on Wentz. Uh, the proposed tower will be to the north of the existing building. Uh, there's a vacant area, uh, to the north of the property. Uh, site plan was, um, provided. The, uh, the tower company is looking to have a eighteen-hundred-square-foot leased area. Uh, it'll be fenced. Uh, there'll be the tower as well as the communications cabinet. Uh, this is within a flood zone, however, uh, for a cell tower, uh, it's considered essentially an accessory structure in that, so it doesn't have to meet the floodplain requirements as if it were a habitable structure, uh, in that. But they are going to elevate the communications cabinet, so in the event it does flood, uh, they don't have any issues with their tower. Uh, this is also, uh, coordinated with the Guthrie, uh, Guthrie Airport, uh, Guthrie Edmund Airport, uh, to make sure that it wasn't in any flight, uh, zone or transition zone that would, uh, cause an issue. Uh, due to the elevation change, uh, between the airport and the proposed site, there was no issue. Uh, so there's no concerns from, uh, the airport standpoint. The commun- or, uh, communications telecommunications ordinance, uh, doesn't have specific setbacks. It is required to have an engineer's letter that will, um, uh, put forth a, basically a fall zone. Uh, so in the event it were to collapse, that, uh, the setback would be the area in which it would collapse upon. In this case, it's, uh, forty, uh, I think it was thirty, thirty-six feet. Uh, the proposed setbacks are forty feet from any property line, uh, so it meets all the required setbacks of a, uh, communications tower. And with that, that's about all that I have. If you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer it. Uh, if not, we'd open it to public to see if there's any public here regarding this item.
Do we have anyone from the public here who wishes to speak on this? Looks like no. I have a question for staff.
Yes.
I believe some areas, when they put towers in, they require them to have a certain look. I think sometimes they disguise them as trees. Do we do anything like that here? I'm guessing probably not.
No, we don't. Uh, part of it is, there's been a, uh, I guess, more of an acceptance for cell towers as the years have gone by. Uh, that was heavily used early on when cell towers first came about, uh, in the late nineties, early two thousands. Uh, but honestly, from my experience, they stand out more if you try to make them look real than if you just leave them alone. Uh, but we don't have any such requirements.
We didn't receive any opposition?
No, we did not. No, uh, no written, uh, no phone, or phone calls, uh, for, uh, this particular item.
I motion to approve.
I'll second that.
A second by, all right. Phil Collins, or Phil Collins, Phil Nichols, sorry, Phil. Phil Nichols?
Yes.
Zach Robbins?
Yes.
Brent Linford?
Yes.
And Lloyd Lance?
Yes.
All right, item passes four oh.
Okay, moving along. Uh, the next PC application before us is number two-four dash zero zero nine. Discussion and possible action on a request for a planned unit development within the R-one single-family dwelling district to allow for the development of seven residential lots on a thirty-nine-acre parcel in the northwest quarter, the northwest quarter of section six, township fifteen north, range two west, generally located at the southeast corner of West Lakewood Drive and South Academy Road. This planned unit development includes a request on exception to the off-site improvement requirements for South Lakewood Drive and South Academy, uh, drive. Staff?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, this is, uh, one of those, it's, uh, always somewhat of a unique item where, uh, you know, the fun part of my job is trying to figure out how to wade through all this. Uh, as indicated, this property is located at, at the very western edge of the city limits. Again, at the intersection of Lakewood, um, Drive, uh, or Lakewood, yeah, Drive and Academy Road. Uh, as you see on the map, uh, it's the thirty-nine, or thirty-nine, yeah, around a thirty-nine-acre parcel there. What transpired is, per our current code, you can subdivide or create up to three new parcels through our lot split process. It's an administrative process, and we just ensured that setbacks are being met, minimum lot size, anything like that. When, uh, you create four, four or more new lots, it kicks in our subdivision requirements, regardless of, you know, uh, whether it's four lots, whether it's four hundred lots, uh, in that, because that's where our code is set up. As you see, this is the development plan. They're looking to have seven total lots. Uh, one of the reasons that they're going through the PD is that's the only process we can provide where they can request exceptions to code requirements, uh, in that. And as indicated in this case, the one exception they're looking for is to not have to do off-site improvements on Lakewood as well as Academy, primarily because of the nature of the subdivision that's, uh, transpired. It, it's a large lot subdivision. Again, four acres is the, is, uh, excuse me, is the minimum requirement for that. Uh, a couple of things to put in there is the, property is zoned R-one, that is not changing. Uh, it's a single-family zoning, so all R-one, single-family zoning would apply, uh, as far as any setbacks, uses, uh, anything like that. And the area does not have any sewer. Uh, in the south side of our community in there, there is no sewer service. Uh, all properties will be on their individual septics. It's under rural water. Uh, rural water, I don't believe has, if you want to say adequate infrastructure in that area, so most of the properties will be on wells, uh, in that. So there's no, uh, sewer or water infrastructure or improvements that would be necessary as part of the subdivision, uh, in that. And so again, it, it kind of falls back on, the only requirement is the off-site improvements. So having said all that, I mean, staff, our staff's recommendation would be to approve, but, uh, with some conditions. One condition would be the exception for off-site improvements to not include, include full paving, curb and gutter be approved, but the portion of Lakewood Drive from southwest Twenty-first Street to Academy Road be paved. So that's that portion that's along the northern pa- uh, part of that. No future lot splits of any of the seven parcels be allowed. Uh, so this would tie it into, um, the seven parcels. And so, uh, if somebody were to buy these properties, they can't come along down the road and try to, you know, split it into three more parcels and before long get to a point where we could have twenty parcels out there. Uh, so that's one of the, if you want to say, values of going through the PUD is we do have control on future, um, splitting of that property, which by doing so will obviously reduce impacts on, uh, the roadways and the infrastructure. And then finally, the third one is the property be developed in substantial compliance with the approv- approved development plan that you're shown. And if there are changes to that, even if somebody, if it were to be approved, down the road would want to split it, they would have to go through this, uh, similar process and have all the notifications and such for that. So with that, I'll give it back to the commission if you have any questions from me, for me. If not, then we can open to the public. And the applicant is here for any questions.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Marvelous. On behalf of the applicant, I don't know if you want to do public comments first or if you have questions. I do have something to address, to address though, about the roadway. So I don't know how you want to proceed.
Why don't we do public comments first?
Okay.
Yeah, that would work and then, yeah, then we can come back.
So I just had the one question there.
Sure.
So what you're, so what we're saying here is if we, if we approve this as it is, then these are the seven.
Yep.
But if for some reason it was separated into three pieces, then one of the three could then eventually be into three also.
Yeah.
So what we're doing here is this, if approval, then that would lock this in where, where none of these, they would have to go through an entire process.
Right.
Okay.
Right, yeah, because right now they could split up to three, sell the remaining acreage. Somebody could come in and buy that, split it up to three, and then they could sell one of those and somebody could split it up. Probably the smallest size that would, you could go down to is a half acre, because that's the minimum you need to have a septic system or a permitted septic system through DEQ. But it could ascend, it could potentially become twenty-some lots.
Okay.
Yeah.
But this way, this would just be settled?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dan, on the off-site improvements?
Mm-hmm.
I just want to make sure I understand what the recommendation is here. So we're just saying, the only thing we're going to ask them to do is to pave the road from Lakewood Drive from southwest Twenty-first to, uh, straight to Academy Road?
Yes.
How far of a stretch of road is that?
It's probably about a half mile.
Half a mile?
Yeah. Because this would-
This is about the midsection right there, so it's probably about a half mile.
That's the one thing I wanted to address.
Let me, let me finish my question. What was the, why don't you go ahead and have a seat? Because we're going to talk to the public after that. Um, so what is the, what's the staff's thinking on why or, why should we not require them to do full curb and gutter?
Because I do believe that there is, you know, again, uh, some, uh, value or validity in the fact that it's not a typical subdivision. You know, it, it is a large lot subdivision. Again, it's four acres as the smallest parcels in that. And our ordinance is set up for, you know, your more typical subdivision where you have, you know, a hundred, two hundred, three hundred lots that are seven thousand square feet. And so, you know, that requires street, gutter, you know, uh, stormwater drainage, you know, the whole nine yards in that. But we don't have anything that's in between. It's almost the all or nothing. You know, you get three lots or after that, you got to do everything. Uh, we don't have kind of that midterm. And so, since, um, Lakewood Drive already has, uh, portion paved, you know, making that all the way would obviously help. Uh, but Academy is, you know, currently unimproved, uh, in that. And so, the traffic that this would generate is going to be very minimal, uh, because we're talking seven lots, uh, in that. And so, it was kind of doing, uh, uh, you know, kind of in between, not making them do stuff that's going to cost more than what the, probably the value of the land is or the lots are, but at least do some improvements, uh, in that to kind of keep consistency with what we would be expecting.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
First, uh, the, I guess, the seven, the big lot there that's got the number nine, is that not going to be part of the thing or is it?
The-
The lower right-hand corner?
Yeah, no, that's part of it.
So is there going to be a road to that?
There's going to be an easement. They'll provide an access easement, which is allowed, uh, in that. So it doesn't have to be an actual road. It can be an easement, uh, because that, again, is, uh, usually what is done with larger lot splits like this is they provide a, um, easement, an access easement, so there's legal access to the parcels. But it will have to have legal access.
And the second question is, has there been any kind of rainwater or stormwater study on this? Is the impact of, uh, developing this?
No, because usually that comes as part of the subdivision process. But on large properties such as this, we don't require it because, uh, given their large nature, there usually is, you know, minimal impact on how that is going to affect the properties. Uh, it, it, it becomes critical when we get into smaller subdivisions or subdivisions with smaller lots, uh, in that to ensure that there's, you know, not an impact, because the impervious surface that's being created from homes as well as, you know, asphalt and that obviously can have a impact on adjacent properties. And so we make sure it's essentially contained inward, uh, and not affected. So when somebody comes in on one of these properties with a permit, we'll make sure that it is going to be contained on site. But it's, uh, usually pretty easy because we're talking, you know, even if you put a three thousand-square-foot home on a four-acre parcel, the impervious surface is, is very limited in the overall.
Well, the first thing that comes to my mind is, uh, that one neighbor developed something on, on this lot and changes the water flow to a neighbor's lot, and then they-
Yeah, we look at that during, uh, through that in every, uh, process, even, even within our existing, uh, areas that have been platted, even when, uh, like our original townsite area in that that we have. We look at that to make sure that it's not going to have a, you know, huge impact. There's no way in some areas that you're going to be able to completely, uh, prevent that. But also, you know, that's why we have setbacks sometimes, so you don't have somebody that can build to the property line and have an overhang, and then that washes onto the adjacent property. But that is, uh, part of our review when somebody comes in with a building permit.
So at this stage, it's just up for sale?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. And as I said, right, I said, as I said, the biggest reason it's going through the process that it is is because they're looking for an exception. Uh, if they were willing to do, uh, the full upgrade of both roads, then we would just do it through the normal subdivision process and, you know, not be here. Because again, the, the zoning i- in that is not changing.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak on this matter? Please come to the podium.
Do I identify myself?
Please.
Address. Sharon, I'm Sharon Dennis. I live on, uh, Twenty-first Street. And, uh, Twenty-first Street comes right to the end of where that pavement is. And my concern is, we have a difficult enough time maintaining Twenty-first Street, and that's the responsibility of five or six or seven homeowners that live along there. And this is going to increase water flow, because this is at the top of the hill, or the hill is, hill is here and it comes down. My concern is that it's going to increase water flow. It's going to go down into this ditch and possibly erode that, that west side of Twenty-first Street, which we have a difficult time maintaining as it is. I don't know if there are any studies that can be done or if there is something that the developer can agree to do to maintain, put in a culvert, do something like that, so that as time goes on and we have heavy rains, it doesn't erode our road and cause us more costs, because that's a private road and we maintain that out of our budgets.
And that sets, ma'am, that sets where from the development?
Okay, so Lakewood-
Can we pull that up?
Yeah, I was going to say, Erin, can you have the one aerial? That other, the location map? There we go.
Okay, so Twenty-first Street is right here. And right about the two W, or the two O's is where the hill, it goes up the hill and then it starts coming back down. And right there where the W is on the first V of the W, that's where our road erodes during heavy rain. And that's approximately where the pavement is. So as you start pavement, a new pavement there, then the runoff from the O's is going to be greater than it is if it's just running down a dirt road.
I have a question for staff. Would it be possible to incorporate the recommendations that are already in here? And also maybe with the addition of some type of, uh, forethought to the drainage of the future, like she mentioned, some type of culvert or something?
I mean, yes, it, it, it would be something that we have not typically done. Uh, the problem with the drainage is, all the properties around there that are developed are as much to attribute to that drainage issue as anything new. So looking simply at new development is not going to solve a problem, because you need to take a more holistic view of that whole kind of drainage area and drainage patterns, uh, in that. So it, it could be something that you would want to recommend, but I honestly don't believe it's going to solve the problem. But from what I'm hearing from that particular neighbor, they feel that more impervious surface is going to create issue than if you would just leave it to basically dirt or a hard-packed gravel, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
In that. So I was just going to comment that that was staff recommendation. If the planning commission would say, we don't want them to pave anything, that's fine. And the same with the council, ultimately, that's, you know, th- their decision in that. Uh, because there's, again, I do believe there's value in both, uh, both aspects. You know, there probably isn't a completely right or wrong answer in that. But she is not wrong in that anytime you put impervious surface, it can create drainage issues.
Do we have anyone else from the public?
Yes.
My name's Kenneth Lawson. I live on the corner of Academy and Lakewood Drive on the west side. I, I've got a house on that corner, if you don't pull that map up. Um, my question is, I've got a couple of questions, a couple of concerns, is first of all, what kind of dwellings are going to be on this property? And, and second of all, I, I have concern with the roads as they are now. There's no ditches on that, on Lakewood Drive. The water runs down the middle of the road as it is now. So e- even if you go in there to fix that road, you can't just lay asphalt on it. You're going to have to make ditches and, and it ain't even really two vehicles wide right now. Um, and I don't, I don't agree with the traffic situation the way it is. The traffic's bad enough out there, and between the county and the city, them roads aren't maintained at all. And it's bad enough for me, I just got to, I got to get up every morning, go to work, and when it rains, it's terrible. But I get the exclusion, but you're going, you're going to add more traffic, you're going to add more driveways to Academy Road. You can see my place right up there, up, up the top, Camp Camp Road, whatever, Camp Drive, I'm, I'm on that corner. Where you're going to add more driveways to that road, however many dwellings are going to be there. And if you add them on Lakewood or South Academy Road, and you have no stipulations on how they build them driveways, it's just going to wash the road out. If you'd go down there and drive Lakewood or Academy and Lakewood Drive right now, you'd see that the, there's no stipulations on anybody's driveways. And instead of it running through a tin horn down a ditch, it just runs across the road. And so, there's got to be some kind of stipulations here-
There are.
-that says, this is, you've got to have a tin horn, but you've got to make a ditch to put a tin horn in it. And there's no ditches on any of these roads.
What's the traffic, so what is the traffic flow like out there from the folks that live out there currently?
Well, if it's, if, if it's summertime, lake, lake traffic is quite a bit. And I'm going to tell you something, they're, they drive them roads-
Hard.
Hard, and they drive them fast. And I, you know, I have to back out of my driveway every day, and it just scares me to death. Somebody come over that hill and, and, you know, it just, and I have talked to the police and asked them to patrol better, and they don't seem to do that either. But my concern is, first of all, what kind of dwellings? I mean, everybody knows if they put trailer houses in there, everybody knows what that turns into, right? I mean, all the trailer houses I've seen, all the little trailer parks I've seen around me or, or that's been put in, they start out really nice and then end up run down. Well, then that, that happens, then that, that drops my property values.
Right.
So, but I've got a lot of concerns about this, actually. I, I know you don't have enough time for me to say them all, but it's just, yeah, I mean, the road's got to be addressed. There's just no way you can put that much more traffic on the road.
Is it just the main road above?
Which would be Lakewood. Yeah, back to the location map.
Is Lakewood primarily talking about?
I'm talking about Academy too.
So Academy and Lakewood are both?
Yeah, Academy and Lakewood, um, they're bad. I mean, it's, it's terrible out there. And like I said, Lakewood, Lakewood is not even two cars wide. It is, it is on the pavement up the hill. And you can call it a paved road if you want to. It's not a very good paved road. And I'm hoping we've got some kind of, uh, plan if we pave that road to do it right, not just go out there and lay, lay asphalt down. You go two and a half miles north on Academy, you'll see what that does. You know, just big, big potholes and everything else, but-
Do you feel if there were tin horns put in place that you would feel a little more comfortable about that?
Yeah, you got to, you got to, you got to require tin horns and, but, but somebody's got to make a ditch. There's no ditch there. You know, it's kind of like on my side of the road, I tried, I've got a tin horn, I, and I had them make a ditch, the county. And it, you know, I mean, it is what it is. I'm not going to sit here and pick on anybody, but that was a year-
And that's on Lakewood and Academy both?
That's on Lakewood and Academy both. You know, I mean, there's, there's, there's no ditches. And, and the guy that bought the land east of there, he's got a tin horn in his, but it, that road should have been widened and that tin horn laid a little further, because he's got it now to where it runs through his tin horn right out the middle of the road.
Uh, the thing is, right now, we don't, we don't have any plans, but our planning director here, Mr., say, how do you say your last name?
Gassett.
Anyway, that got there. I, he has to approve anything, and those things will be, be, just having it as a subdivided plot doesn't in itself change anything.
Understand that.
And when somebody goes to build on that, that's the point in which the responsibility of that builder or that developer has to address these problems of the, of the road and so on. So whether it's a holistic, where they do a study of the whole area and try to improve it, the, which in my opinion needs to be done, but, uh, or if they do it by a piecemeal deal, where this guy builds a lot, and then the guy on the far corner builds a lot, and then the middle guy builds a lot, uh, it, that's going to create more problems than it helps, in my, in my opinion. But I think a holistic study of the whole thing is what needs to be done.
Right, well, if I could, uh, there are a few things to clear up. One is zoned R-one, that's not changing. So any and all permitted uses within the R-one would be allowed. Nowhere in the city of Guthrie is a mobile home or, as the gentleman indicated, trailer, uh, allowed without a special use permit. Uh, so that can't happen, uh, in that. But they have, you know, again, there are certain rights or, or, uh, permitted rights for that property. So, I mean, I can't say, it could be an eight-hundred-square-foot home, it could be an eight-thousand-square- foot home, I don't know. Any of that would be allowed under the zoning. We do have requirements for curb cuts and for driveways within the right of way. So at, anytime that somebody comes in for a permit, they would be required to adhere to our standards. If a tin horn is required, a tin horn is put in. We have sizing requirements and that. The one the gentleman spoke about is not a permanent one. They have a building permit for that property. They put in a temporary one for construction and construction traffic. At such time that they get close to being done, they will put in the proper driveway with a proper tin horn in that location and that. But even like I said, general drainage. Now, if the planning commission wants to say that for the subdivision, they need to give us a plan to better, to better help drainage to where they could make better ditches or whatever, that's, that's fine, we can, you know, we can do that. That's not a problem. In that, what I was talking about is if we're worrying about flooding that's coming from the north or the far east part or whatever going down that hill, it's hard to address it because, with just one development. But I don't think asking for better drainage along a ditch or that is, again, out of the question for that in that. So it's really up to, again, the planning commission. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just to, just to clarify there, also, when you, when you say requiring to pave, you have a, you have a standard stipulation?
Yes.
It's not just.
Yes.
Do this and we'll see if it will.
No, you're correct. It isn't literally.
You'll have full plans, full things, all that for that.
Yeah.
It'll be set to set city standards.
You were exactly right. It isn't just going out there and just putting asphalt over, or what's there. There are standards they would have to meet.
But one of the exclusions was fixing the road, was it not?
No, one of the, part of the exclusion would be they wouldn't require like curb gutter that is typical in a subdivision. That's why I was saying if it requires for the road to go in, we would look at the ditches or that area to make sure that it all works and meets our standards. The other thing was, is like Academy, if they aren't required to do anything, then yeah, what's there is there. But like I said, there would be more than simply them just putting a sheet of asphalt down and calling it good. There would be standards they would have to make, meet to make sure that the drainage along there is accommodated.
Okay. And it will be, the roads will be maintained?
Yeah, they're city streets. Yeah, they're city roads.
I know they are, they're not maintaining that.
I understand, yeah, but they, yes.
But I'm just saying, you put, you put more traffic, more driveways, you know, and then typically when people build their lots, they try to drain it away from everything. They want it drained to the road in the ditch, not in the middle of their lot. I'm just saying, we, I mean, that concerns me.
Yeah, I understand.
And I'll, I'll leave it at that and let these other people speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Gerald Reams. I have, I bought the property right straight south of Kenneth in 2016. And which I actually, it's straight, it's, it's straight west of where this property's at, off of Academy. You can see, actually, that's my entrance way going in, right south of this place. And.
Right here.
Right now.
Right down.
One day.
Right up. Right in the middle, right in the middle.
Right there.
Nope.
Follow the line from the center. Follow the center.
There you go.
Not that it matters, and again, not that it's bad, but all the properties that are along here are in the county.
Right.
The, the street, the road is within the city, but all the properties are in the county.
Right.
Yeah. But I, I pretty much agree with everything Kenneth has just said. One of my concerns is what kind of property, you know, structures are gonna go in there. That's one of my main concerns with that. And, and then as far as the road, Lakewood coming through there right now, they put a, a new entrance in right there and totally, like Kenneth said, more or less cut the road down to a one lane road. And they're, the way that they brought their entrance out a little into, into the road and then whenever it comes to rain, it just kicks that water out and it goes right down the middle of the road. And it, and it was, it was horrible before and that was.
And that's the temporary for the.
Yeah. Yeah, at least the driveway.
The driveway.
I think they did do some work on the actual sides of the property. When I was out there, they did some grading in that, in that, which, you know, as I indicated, we would still address in that. But yeah, the one driveway there is a temporary, it's not the final.
Yeah, well, now there's, there was one that went in where they put a tin horn in and that's off to the.
Yeah, that's.
Basically on this property over here.
And then they opened another.
Right there somewhere.
Yeah. And then they opened another entranceway up, right straight west of that.
You know, the big property right there.
Oh, here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have to get in touch with them.
So the, the one that hasn't been permitted?
It's about right here. Yeah, there's, I was gonna say, there's the one I know, cause like I said, this, this property has a permit issue.
Yeah.
And so like I said, that's temporary, but you're saying this property has one?
Right there, right there, the one right here in the last month.
Yeah.
Just went all out on that road and washed everything out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a filthy river.
And also the traffic, I agree with Kenneth on the traffic, it's, the traffic's, it's, it's got sizably larger lot, a lot more, especially since 2016. In the last year and a half to two years, it's really came up, the traffic has. And, and then the, the, the one intersection right there at Lakewood and Academy, that's a very dangerous intersection right there.
The one that's over just right where Kenneth's place is?
Yeah, right, right on Kenneth's place.
The west one, yeah.
Can't, can't ride there.
Yeah, yeah.
People come down that road flying and actually Kenneth witnessed an accident there one day and the accident was my neighbor where I live. I live off of Ridge Crest Drive.
And I think in this area up here that's in the county, I think the same owner is doing some type of subdivision there. But obviously that's in the county.
County, yes.
You know, nothing that regulates that, but I think it's the same owner.
And then one of my concerns is that I really don't agree with the inclusion, I mean, anything, I, I think it should be, if it's gonna be developed, it should have curb and gutter and, and everything like it is because that's gonna affect the value of my property right straight across from it. And that's pretty much my concern.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this?
Maybe at this time we could hear from the applicant. I was gonna say, now you can, yeah, open it for the applicant to go ahead and obviously speak and address some of the questions.
I just wanna clarify for the sake of all of us, myself, most importantly, we have established that because this is an R1 residential zoning, that from the get-go, a mobile home, trailer home is strictly not allowed, correct?
Right, not without a special use permit.
Without a special use permit, okay.
And how would we know with special use permits?
You would get notified just as you have with this one, yeah.
Is there any way we can speak against that?
Yeah, when you get notice if it comes, yeah. In that, cause again, it's a similar process, the special use permit's a similar process where it goes to the planning commission for recommendation and then the council for final approval.
Can we hear from the applicant? I'm sorry, you're fine.
Thank you for your patience.
No, no worries, it's been interesting. The road work, it's not that the roads were already in a bad shape to begin with before we even come up here, but what you're talking about is gonna cost more than the value of that, that entire land to pay and curb and all that. And I appreciate that that needs to be some work done on that. And I'm not real sure, Dan, as these lots, cause we're just selling the lots. We're not builders, we're not building anything on it, we're just selling them and each person's gonna get their own permit to build a single family home with permits through the city. As they butt up to the roadways, the tin horns and stuff that I've heard being talked about, I would think that would be part of their building permit.
It is.
As they go forward. So those will eventually, as those are being built, will be addressed by each individual owner of each lot as they work their way around. To put that type of an expense on this project, I would just, it would be, it's a six-figure number. It's not gonna be, and I'm sorry that the roads are that bad, but I, and I feel for these people that spoke, but to have that entire problem being borne by these people, I think's a little unfair in this instance. You know, we're, he's telling, I talked to the developer, he's saying there's some utility lines and some stuff in there that's, it's more than just running a tractor out there scraping ditches. You know, there's some stuff that needs to be moved, AT&T lines, gas lines, that kind of stuff. That's gonna be a big project at some point for somebody else. So we're happy to do what we can do, that's just not gonna be one of the things we can do. So I hope they take that, we're trying to make it, it's gonna, doing it in this fashion actually gives the city control, cause if this were to be approved, these lots could not be divided up any longer. They would be these lots until they came back up there and asked for permission to cut them up again. And we're trying to give the city that control by approving that. And as each permit comes in for each of these lots, I think maybe you can address it individually per lot, not put it on the front end of the builder or the developer, or the seller rather that I'm asking for. So it's a tough situation, I understand that, and I, I hope it can be resolved, but this project cannot afford that type of work.
So these lots marvel are gonna be sold to just individuals with?
We are selling just the lot.
Just selling the land?
Yes. And those lines, just to be clear, if you can pull that back up there, it's just the, and you probably know this, but I wanna make sure we say that, those white lines are just property lines. Those are not roads.
Yeah.
There are no, there are no roads in here.
We kinda got that.
I figured you did, but I wanna make sure.
You know, from my perspective, I get the concerns of not knowing what potentially to go on there. I understand there's always checks and balances, but if my home was across the road, I'd have the same concerns.
Of course, and I understand this, yes, but these are single family, these aren't gonna be multifamily, each lot's only gonna be a single home. Like you said, they could be 800 or 8,000 square foot, but it's just gonna be one house.
Since it's in the city limits, it can't be trailer homes.
Right, yeah.
Not without a special use permit application.
Which would require them to come back before.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I, I think the, the problem is gonna be there no matter what they do, whether it's subdivided or not, as soon as somebody puts a tin horn and a driveway in there, it's gonna create a drainage problem and that person has the right to do that no matter what we decide here tonight. So if they buy that land, they can put in a tin horn in a driveway, they have to go by the, the codes and the permits.
Correct.
That are current, but that doesn't solve any of the problems that we're talking about.
Well, I mean, I don't know, I'm not a city planner, but this road sounds just horrible. I mean, apparently from what these people are saying, it's just, you know, I would, I would think the city road crew could be out there fixing some of this stuff if it's as bad as I'm hearing these people talking.
I think the city's in the same boat that your private developers are, all it takes is money.
All right, that's it, all is money, right. So.
That's where, that's the problem all of us face.
Well, and I know that, I just, in, in this kind of, I don't have an answer for that.
Yeah.
I don't have an answer for that. But you're, I would think, I don't know, as these, as each one of these lots are being done and these permits are being applied, I, I could envision at least a continuous ditch with a tin horn at each driveway eventually being across that road as each person builds their house, right? Cause they're gonna need that done correctly when they live there as well. So hopefully, all of these neighbors would eventually build this nice ditch with everybody having their own tin horn across it as they build houses on those properties. I don't know if that's possible, but I mean, that's what I would hope would happen.
Yeah.
And those permits, I would think would be somehow requiring those items, would they not?
Well, as I said, you know, we do take drainage into consideration on any property that is being developed. I can't tell you with certainty what improvements, if any, would be required, cause obviously each situation is different in that. All I can say is that is something that is taken into consideration anywhere in the city, and that is the stormwater drainage.
So I mean, not to be too simplistic, but if you were looking at a home permit, would that be required to have a tin horn on the driveway?
Again, it, it, it again depends on, yeah, the existing roadway drainage and that, cause we have standards if you're putting a tin horn in, but it doesn't always necessarily require you to put one in. But again, it's based, you know, looking at the drainage situation and, you know, each property. So these probably likely would require it because of, yeah, especially on Lakewood, on how they would, but again, until we get something in front of us, it's hard to, you know, give certainty.
Yeah.
That's where, that's where I feel is we're up here trying to make a decision with, just like everybody in the room and just like the developer with a lot of unknowns.
Yeah.
You know, none of us got handed a crystal ball when we came in here tonight.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's what makes this a challenge.
Yeah.
Yeah, we want good development, we want good development that's done correctly.
Yes.
This will control the size of, these lots will not be changed, cannot be changed without coming back up here and doing this process. So at least it controls the size, that there's not gonna be another subdivision.
I like the size of them, but.
They're big, yeah.
But I just, but again, you know, I grew up in Kansas, inside the Flint Hills of Kansas, and my family owns land up there and on three sides of our property, we've got stuff that wasn't gonna be there someday, we were told. And so, so I, I, I mean, and I'm not suggesting that's what y'all are doing, I just know that we all have our own life experiences and.
And again, if the commission can, you know, again, go whatever direction you want, even at this point, if you say, okay, maybe you don't have to pave it, but you need to submit a basically right of way improvement plan that is gonna show how it's gonna drain and that and, you know, say, make sure it drains correctly and you can put some gravel down to accommodate it, you know, or something like that, that's fine. Or you can again, have the whole thing where, yeah, you're gonna pave it and we're gonna make sure the drainage works. Or you can say, just leave it as is, you know, those are all options, cause obviously that's one of the main reasons we're here today.
Sure.
Is that, so again, mine was only suggested recommendation, so if there's any of that you would like to see happen, that can be part of your conditions.
Well, I'm more, I'll just speak for myself, I'm more inclined to, with all due respect to everybody in the room, you know, the folks that live around this, you know, we, whether they live in the city or not, we have to consider what the impact's gonna be on their lives.
Mm-hmm.
And me personally, you know, the developers purchase the land or own the land with the idea of selling it to go out, and I, and I get that. I, I, I'm not one that likes exceptions to standards.
Mm-hmm.
That's just me personally. I, I, I think standards are there because at some point, a group of people that are a lot smarter than me sat around and said, these are smart things to do to ensure the quality of our neighborhoods. And I get nervous when we start making exceptions to those kind of things.
Yeah. And, and again, I should've mentioned, yeah, if you feel, you know, it more appropriate just to deny the application, obviously you can do so. And what that would again, then entail, if it does go to the council with the same decision, it would require them to meet all the standards that would be necessary of a subdivision and the right of way improvements and, and things like that.
And I get Marvel's, the clients he's representing, I, I understand, I mean, I get it, I see both sides, I do. And I think everybody in the room sees both sides. But I'm just, again, me personally, I'm not one that's gonna, that's, that typically is going to like to have exception, exceptions to standards that somebody said were important at some point, because I think that's why they were put there. Whether the lots are five acres or they're the standard city lot, they were still there for a reason at some point.
But they do have the ability to subdivide this into three pieces with no.
Correct.
With no control.
Correct.
If they go, if they were to go back and say, hey, you know, we've got one, eight that's sold right here and we've got these three fours and we've made that into a twelve and this is a nineteen, there's really, this is a non-issue, this is a non.
That's correct.
It's just, that's their free.
Correct.
Free will to do that. And then if somebody then chose to, then they can do that. And I know I keep putting that down, I'm just, just as a, as a thing that says, hey, this is the, this is the, you know.
Yeah.
This would be their next step if they decided to, you know, hey, this is, if if it were denied, say, hey, well, this is what we can do, but that's, that's it. So I just wanted to, just to make sure that I.
Cause that's how we got.
Had that completely clear.
Yeah, cause that's how we got all the subdivided lots off of sixteenth, seventh or seventeenth, eighteenth and twenty-fourth or that whole area. Those are all subdivided through lot splits or deed splits, there was no.
But by, but by right, they have the right to take their piece of land.
Yeah, yeah, I was just saying, there was no subdivision that created that, it was all through a lot split process over years.
And to.
To be sensible about it, the city is gonna have the same control over those three lots as they would for these seven lots.
You mean like zoning wise?
No, I mean, as far as roadways and the.
Oh, yeah, driveways and all, yeah, cause again, that applies to any lot regardless.
And and the runoff to these.
Yes.
These properties is gonna be the same whether it's divided into seven or three.
Yes.
The, the water's gonna run off of this property, it's not all gonna stay there, otherwise it'd be a lake.
Yeah.
So, uh.
Whether divided by permit or divided by right.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks, I was hoping somebody'd make sense of what I said.
I got you.
Why don't you guys just build the houses, you can tell us what you're gonna build and we won't have this problem.
Well, we're not to that point yet. Wait someday.
Yeah. Marvel, do you have anything else?
No, that's pretty much it. That's just, it's just not cost feasible for this project. I'm talking, that's, I don't know what that is, we've not looked at cost on that, but you know it's a six-figure, big six-figure number to do what you're talking about.
Yeah.
And we'll have to do something else if this isn't approved. And we're trying to give the city control of it as now, cause which if it's approved, you can control what happens to it in the future. We gotta do something else, you know, we gotta cut it up a different way, it's different.
I do appreciate that, I.
A hundred percent.
Completely respect that.
Yeah, yeah, we're just, we're trying to do it this way.
Doing responsible, you bet.
Absolutely, so, you need something else, let me know.
Thank you, Marvel.
Thank you.
Dan, I have one last question. Um, I keep going back and ma'am, I apologize, what was your name again, first lady who spoke?
Sharon.
Sharon.
When Sharon talked about more concerned about the blacktop being down than not, and then Kenneth talked about, we don't have ditches and we don't have all these things, you know, um, and all of us understand that all it takes is a bunch of money to fix those things. Um. Um, is it, is it, because I'd like to, listen, we'd all like to try and do something where everybody walks out of here happy, right? And it's fair for everybody. Is it a possibility that we could, cause I'll, I'll tell you where I'm, I'd like to go out and drive it, cause I haven't driven it. Mm-hmm. I'd like to go out and drive it and look at it, not trying to make this a bigger deal than it is, but I, but I wanna, before I cast the vote, I wanna know what I'm really talking about. Mm-hmm. And I can't with any integrity at all, sit up here and say that I have a clue by looking at that map, what these roads look like, what that looks like, I just don't know. Is it possible that we could, and I, and I hate to do this to the, to the folks that are wanting to move on this, could we table this for a future meeting? Absolutely. Give us time to go out and and actually spend some time out there and look and see what we're really talking about? Yes, absolutely, uh, that is. Do you guys disagree with that or?
No, I agree.
The only thing.
I almost wonder if it would be a good idea for as many of us as possible to go out and look at it together.
No.
Cause you know, somebody can see something that the other one doesn't see.
Yeah, the only thing that I, you know, recommend is that we put it to a date certain, uh, meeting certain, so we keep the notification requirements. Uh, or that in place, so we don't have to re notify and obviously all the people that are here will know of that date and so we can go forth. Uh, you can make it to the February, or February, the January meeting, uh, if you'd like, cause we're already gonna have a meeting, uh, we have other agenda items, or you could put it out farther, it's up to you, but that's totally within, uh, you know, your ability or reason to do so. Well, you know how I feel, but I tend to like to follow the recommendations of the pros. The pros, the pros that sit over here, and I'm inclined to do that, and I know that just sort of, I know Dan's a pro, he knows what he's doing. I'm sure not questioning that recommendation, it's just I wanna, I wanna lay eyes on it and have an opportunity to really see what we're talking about more than anything. Yeah, thank you.
So we have a proposal to table this for the January meeting?
Ninth.
January ninth.
January ninth, yeah, cause it would be January nine twenty. Yes, twenty twenty-five already, so, okay, so.
Make a motion that we table that till.
Okay, so.
And do some more research, look it over a bit and put that on January's.
So motion by, let me see here, Zach Robbins, and was there a second? I'm sorry, is there a second? I'll second it. Okay, second. So we have a motion and a second to table this item to the January ninth, twenty twenty-five meeting, uh, and so with that, Phil Nichols? Yes. Zach Robbins? Yes. Brent Linford?
Yes.
And Lloyd Lentz?
Yes.
All right, so that's four oh to table, so we will bring this back January ninth. Thank you all, appreciate all of you coming to comment. Really do. Thank you guys, I'm back, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Okay, I think the last thing on our agenda for the night is PC application twenty-four dash zero one zero, discussion and possible action on requests for a rezone from R one, single family dwelling to R two, general residential for a property located at ten sixteen West Warner, Wes Guthrie, lots fifteen and twenty, block twenty-six. Can we get a staff report, please?
Thank, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, as indicated, this is a rezone uh from R one to R two. Uh, it's a similar request we've had in the recent past. Uh, the property is a twenty-one thousand eight hundred square foot property, uh, that's currently has a single family home that is a bed and breakfast, a stone line in. Uh, the owner is looking to rezone it, cause he wants to put an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, currently per our code, we don't have any options for accessory dwelling units, so the only way to get there is to rezone it to a zoning classification that would allow for more than one unit, which is R two. Uh, the only other stipulation is that in order to have two units, you have to have a minimum of an eight thousand square foot lot, which obviously is, uh, far exceeds the minimum. Uh, so with that, uh, I just wanna mention that, you know, even if there, if it was a vacant lot or or whatever, uh, by our current code, they could have up to nine units on that. However, uh, I don't believe the owner is looking to tear down the existing uh building and that, so the likelihood of getting probably more than an ADU on there is probably not going to happen uh in that. But with that, uh, you know, staff doesn't have any concerns with that. Again, we've had similar requests in the past to rezone to R two, so with that, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the rezoned request from R one to R two. And the applicant is here, if you have any questions, as well as the owner. And again, if you have any questions, me, be happy to answer them.
Can we hear from both of you guys, please?
I'm Grant Carey, I own Stone Line Inn, and the purpose of this application is just to put in a unit that I will live in so that I can get out of living with people who are ghost hunting in my large home late at night, uh, you know, every night of the week. You know, I'm a college professor, I'm old, I need my sleep, and I don't get that now, so.
Grant, you're not planning on building eight other.
No, no.
Small houses on there.
Yeah. I would note that the other, you know, the other, the way we could've done this would be to do a lot split and then just build.
Correct, yep.
Yeah.